Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Give the invitation. Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, we can pass that, Mr. City Manager, since everyone is in attendance this evening. Good to see everybody here. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on June 15th.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on both non-agenda and agenda items. If anybody would like to speak during an agenda item, we would ask that you would hold your comments until that item, I will come back to you. Is there anybody in the audience this evening for non-agenda items?
We have no one.
Thank you. Moving on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes, although I did send out a couple of updates. The motion for item four is on your table. There was an incorrect motion put in the packet. And then the marked up version of the cemetery rules for item number six are also on your table. But other than that, the agenda stays the same.
Thank you. City Council, any changes? Be you not? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on the motion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. There is no public hearing this evening. We have nine items for consideration this evening. The first one being consideration of special event requests, St. Augustine Festival. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from St. Augustine Catholic Church to have one signage around town for the parish festival, and across the road banner in conjunction with the parish festival, and to designate a portion of the Howard Street parking spaces near the church for handicap parking. All three of these special event requests have been approved in the past. They normally come a little bit earlier in the year. I believe the parish festival committee was waiting to kind of see what the social distancing regulations would be. In speaking with Cindy Mancheck, she felt they would normally be under the 250 people. I do believe that she had mentioned being here tonight. I don't know if she is in the audience, but it's, everything is before you.
Thank you. Is Cindy Mancheck here tonight?
No, she's not here.
Okay, thank you. Is, would, okay. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application from St. Augustine Catholic Church to have six temporary signs in conjunction with their annual parish festival on August 7th through August 9th, with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall work with city staff on proper placement of the signs to minimize any sight visibility issues. And secondly, the signs are allowed to be displayed July 27th through August 11th, 2020.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Be you not? Any audience participation on this?
None.
Thank you, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion to spoo, to approve the across the road banner. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special event application from St. Augustine Church, Catholic Church, to have an across the road banner in conjunction with their annual parish festival to be displayed July 27th through August 11th, and direct the city clerk to submit the application to MDOT.
Support.
No.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this? Any audience participation?
No, sorry, none.
No?
No.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a third motion for the 13 parking spaces, is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the request from St. Augustine Parish Festival to make the 13 parking spaces on Howard Street between the two church driveways handicap parking for the St. Augustine Parish Festival on August 7th through August 9th.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Need the audience participation?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I'd like to note that I wish she was here this evening to assure that, you know, there have been very, very few festivals and events. And being the fact that they, as they have said, been under the 250 limit the governor has set at the moment, there's a very good chance there could be a lot of people because they're looking for events. I would hope that they would still try to follow the rules that have been set up for the safety of our community and our people and people that visit here. So, that could be very difficult to do. I hope there...
I can certainly, when I let her know that her event was approved, let her know that the council wishes that, that to be noted.
Is council in agreement with that?
I'm in. I think that needs to be put in there, because we put it on Starbrewery too for their, so I think it needs to be put in there.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think we have, we have a consensus to that. Okay, moving on. Item number two is consideration of special event requests by the Parish Kickball League. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from Preston Trend on behalf of St. Augustine and Holy Family Parishes to utilize Bailey Ball Park, or Bailey Park Ball Diamond, otherwise known as Diamond F, for a church kickball league. The church would like to utilize the Ball Diamond in Bailey Park on Wednesday evenings from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. The league runs from July 8th through August 12th. I believe from, and also it's for an adult league, it's ages 25 and up. I think in the past, they've played up in Memphis, and this year would like to come down to Richmond and play.
Very good. Could I ask, take liberty here, the way the motion is, is read at all, it could be read that they have the ball field from July 8th through August 12th? If you simply put on there after the third line that says for St. Augustine and Holy Family Parishes, comma, on Wednesdays, comma, July 8th through August 12th, it'd be very clear that it was just Wednesdays that we were approving this?
Sorry about that.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event requests for the use of the Bailey Park Field, uh, I'm sorry, Bailey Park Ball Field for an adult kickball league for St. Augustine and Holy Family Parishes on Wednesday, July 8th through Wednesday, August 12th, from 6:30 p.m. till 9:00 p.m.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. I'm not exactly sure how you said that. It sounded like you said on, did you read the motion as printed?
No, I changed from to on.
Okay, okay.
On Wednesdays.
On, it should, if, if you were going to do what I asked, or on Wednesdays, that way, comma, July 8th through, is that what you meant to say or not?
Yes, that is.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I thought I heard that, you know, on Wednesday, July 8th through August 12th.
I meant Wednesdays.
Okay, so let's clarify, she did say, or mean on Wednesdays, comma, July 8th through August 12th. I'm sorry, did we get a second?
Yes.
Yes, I thought we did. Any discussion? I'm glad they're coming down here, because I believe most of their games are all played in Memphis last year, and they came down, the one time, they couldn't use the diamond or something up there, and they came down here and, and they were happy with what they had, and good to see that they're bringing it here. Is there any audience participation on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three, consideration of proposal on Old City Hall. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a proposal from Eric Gordon of Printall to purchase 68225 Main Street, commonly known as Old City Hall. At the last council meeting, council approved recommending waiver of the purchasing requirement ordinances and the requirement to competitively bid City Hall. That allows us at this meeting to consider the proposal. I put the proposal in the packet for council's consideration. I also have reviewed it myself, and the city attorney has, has reviewed it. Both of us feel that the general outline of the proposal is acceptable and kind of in the spirit of what the council and administration had talked about. You know, looking more not only at the price offered, but at the ultimate use of the building. He's proven himself as a longtime member of the business community, and then as a also recent, more recent business owner on the north end, has a strong business, a stable business up there. It would make a very stable business in the Granory Business District down there at Old City Hall, employing people and also increasing foot traffic to that area. And due to that, it would be a five-year land contract. My recommendation is for approval. The proposal is written, obviously, as in kind of general terms. At some point, an attorney's gonna need to draft a land contract document, legal land contract. But my recommendation is to have council approve and direct administration to work with, with Eric on that.
Okay. I believe Eric is here. Were we informed that?
Yes.
Okay. Would Eric like to speak at this time?
Sure. Do you have to be to come?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay, break in. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, Richmond's always given me a big hug, everything I do. It's a wonderful town. Um, I'm trying to create more jobs and a safer work environment for my employees on top of it, because we have outgrown our state. Um, we have other considerations, but this would be great for us. Um, we get a piece of history, and that's what we're really excited about, is actually adding a piece of history of Richmond. I'd like to take the building back to its roots and get it looking like it did in that photo that I enclosed in my proposal, with the more ornamental windows and the higher ceilings. I want to make it a destination and an experience for people. So, um, it's got enough room for me to operate for quite a while. It interests me, and, um, yeah, I really appreciate the opportunity that you are providing me, and thanks for looking at the proposal.
Okay, does council have any questions before a motion? Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposal from Eric Gordon for the purchase of 68225 Main Street for $100,000 over a five-year land contract and direct administration to work with the purchaser to prepare the necessary documentations for approval.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
I actually have a question. Would he still, I, he would still qualify for all the grants, correct?
Correct.
And, and just, if you're listening, Mr. Gordon, I hope you're aware of the grants that are available to help you fix up that building.
I believe he is.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
If not, I'll be making a more of it, yep.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
It is. I, I, that's another comment, I'm just, I'm very pleased that this is happening. Um, I appreciate the inclusion of the photograph of the 1923 building, what it looks like, and I went up there then after seeing this, and I never realized that there was a door on the south side of the building, and so it's kind of exciting to see maybe that even coming off, and just really a facelift in that area of town, back to that 1920s look and feel as well.
As am I.
Anything else? Be you not? Is there anybody else in the audience to discuss this, or comment on this?
No, thank you.
Okay. Back to the table, any final comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 156-27, which is rezoning from RM1 to B3, property located on portions of 37147 31 Mile Road, 37201 31 Mile Road, and also 67567 Main Street. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give introduction and first reading to ordinance 156-27, which will amend the official zoning map and rezone approximately 5.57 acres of property from RM1, multiple family residential, to B2, general business. This rezoning will bring, is being proposed by Dick Hoover Land Incorporated as part of a proposal to enlarge and redevelop their central campus, the main dealership site located at 67567 Main Street. As mentioned in the background brief, it essentially takes the two back halves of the 31 Mile properties and rezones those to, um, B3, uh, general business, along with kind of your, a longer, skinnier portion that's attached to the Main Street property that currently is where like their retention area is. Uh, and this is kind of an overall rezoning and plan that they've been working on several years with the Planning Commission and previously us when we rezoned the back half of the Henry Ford property to general business. Uh, so this will allow them to bring all of their properties kind of under one parcel, zoning lot, with all the same zoning, and allow them to move forward with their site plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
Make the motion to give introduction and first reading of ordinance 156-27, consideration of changes to the official zoning map, change the zoning of multiple properties located on portions of 37147 31 Mile Road, 37201 31 Mile Road, and 67567 Main Street from RM1 to B3.
Support. What's been made and supported, any discussion? As John said, there was a lot of discussion on this, there's been a lot of discussion on this over the years, when this has appeared in different forums in front of the Planning Commission. Uh, this one seemed to be the, the best, of course, that's why Planning Commission recommended it to the city council, by keeping those front properties still residential. It's just the far back properties, I think about 450 feet or some, somewhere in that neighborhood, that would be used for the storage of vehicles. Also, the, one of the concerns has always been the multiple housing to the west of that, right next to this property, and it was very, very clear on the motion and the discussion to the administration at Planning Commission that something be worked out between the property owner and the city and the Hoover Group that's gonna be doing the expansion, in other words, protect that area instead of having to look at 600 cars or whatever's gonna be in there. We want to somehow shade that, burm it, whatever it is that they're gonna be able to amicably come up with to protect that property. So there was a lot of discussion on that and, and what I want to say, motion in that effect. So, Mr. Cazell's property should be protected pretty well, and still leave that, that residential rural area on the front half of the property. So, best of both worlds, from the conversations we've had for many years about these pieces of property back there. Any other discussion? Any audience comments?
None.
Thank you. Anything else? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We will have the second reading at the next city council meeting. Item number five is consideration of the purchase of a new police vehicle. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal year 2020-21 police budget included $39,000 for the purchase of one 2021 Ford Police Interceptor SUV vehicle. The proposed new patrol SUV would mirror the looks and equipment, the current three 2015s, and the one 2019, and the newest 2020, now used for daily patrol. However, it will be a 2020 model at the quote of $35,674. Due to COVID, they have a surplus of the 2020s, so it's a new vehicle, but yet at a better price. Attached, we did provide the list of, of the up, upgrades that we have purchased on the previous vehicles as well. Uh, so this is just kind of the final, uh, new SUV vehicle that will take the place of the last of the toruses. Normally, we would sell all those three toruses. Uh, we will probably be bringing something back to council for your consideration on the potential use of one of those toruses for an admin car. There's been some council members discussing that with administration for a DPW admin car, so we'll be bringing something back in the future on, on that, but that would still leave some for sale.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2020 Ford Police Interceptor SUV in the amount of $35,674, with the necessary added options from Signature Ford, with the expenses charged, the appropriate light item, police department, equipment acquisition.
Support. What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Of course, there was a number of discussions on this during our budget. Is there any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consider, oh, item number six is consideration of the revision to the cemetery rules. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider adopting revisions to the cemetery rules. Uh, in June, we had emailed out the, uh, a memo regarding the changes, as well as a marked up copy of the changes. Most of the changes relate, the substantive changes relate to allowing larger headstones. Uh, when we were, Jim Getzinger was reviewing our, our cemetery rules, there were some people that wanted a little bit larger headstones, and there really wasn't a reason not to allow them, other than our rules did not allow them. Uh, so, in looking at that, the biggest changes are those. We also had some formatting changes, just to kind of clean up some of the language and make it easier to read. These changes were emailed out to council in June to give you a chance to read them. Unfortunately, the, uh, copy that went in your packet didn't have the markups. But the marked up copy is on the table tonight. If council is comfortable, certainly you can adopt the changes tonight. If not, we understand if you need to table it.
Council's pleasure. I know we just got this, as the city manager said, there's more changes on here than I thought when we talked this afternoon. So everything in red is changes?
Yes, correct.
Karen, is Jim there?
No.
I'm gonna move to table, to, or postpone until the next meeting, which is July, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Sure.
Today's the 6th, so 1320.
20th, yeah.
It'd be the 20th.
Motion to postpone until the 20th?
Yeah. Oh, you made the motion, so I support it, yes.
What's been made and supported? Discussion? There's just a little too much in there. I thought it was just the size of the grave markers, but there's a number of other things in here that I was just reading, which may all be about grave markers, but I haven't had time to read it since I got here.
Understandable. And Jim's comfortable with that.
Yep.
I know I talked to him, I think, he may think the meeting's at 7, so...
I think maybe a few people thought the meeting was at 7 tonight. Okay. There, there is a conversation on the motion to postpone, so any, any other conversation on this? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number eight is consideration of the extension of the emergency declaration. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing, it's a little something screwed up here. Consideration of revision to cemetery headstone guidelines. Is that it?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Again, this is a change to our cemetery rules that allow, currently, we do not make any reference to headstones that would allow cremains to be placed within the headstones. Uh, technology has changed, and now, as you can see in the photos that are included in your packet, I apologize, the second page got copied upside down, but essentially, they make headstones now that you can put the cremains right into the headstone. Um, they're becoming more popular as cremation becomes more popular in the general public. We don't have an issue with that, and we do have people that want these type of headstones. Our only concern is on the overall operations of the cemetery, so at this point, administration is recommending the changes that we've provided council, but that would keep, these changes would keep the total number of graves or, or remains that can be placed on any single grave at the current limit of three. That would give administration and council time to kind of see over time what the impact of these changes would be on the cemetery operations.
See, and I don't, I have a question about that. I just, I have a question about that. Do you want me to wait till the motion happens?
Yeah, let's have, if there's a motion. For motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revising cemetery rules and regulations. Support. That's like the same motion that we just...
Yeah.
...table.
Jamie, you had some?
My question is, is, um, I guess, why three? Because in the photographs, it had pictures of it four?
Right.
So I was confused.
Again, back to administration, currently, on one single grave, you're allowed to bury a traditional coffin and two cremains, so a total of three. So our thought is, by changing and allowing these headstones, we would keep that total number allowed to three, because then we can kind of see, are we gonna lose a lot of sales? By doing that, for example, if you currently bury three people in the ground, and you purchase one of these headstones that allows four, now you're up to seven on a single grave. And I don't think the intention of administration or council is to approve seven remains on a single grave. So our thought is to limit the number. You could put two in the headstone and one in the ground. You could put, you know, one in the ground, one casket in the ground, one cremain in the ground, and one cremain in the headstone. Our view is, at this point, our rec, or at least administration's recommendation is to keep it at the current limit of three.
Okay, and you're, the number you're getting, seven, just for clarification, is because there's three that can go into the ground, and then four that would potentially go inside the headstone?
And I'm just using that as example of the two that we showed in here. I believe there's other headstones that probably have more than four.
Okay.
So that could impact the number of sales we have and our ability to maintain our cemetery. But yet, at the same time, obviously cremation is becoming more popular. But yet, at the same time, obviously cremation is becoming more popular, so there are people that are looking for these.
I think it's a good idea, whatever we come up with, rule wise, to be able to allow this, talking with some of the residents that are, I think, been talking to you. So I'm in favor of that, but the rules, that's subject to discussion here on how many or what we think is right.
Are we concerned about the income of sales for, I guess that's never been an issue?
It's always been an issue.
Well.
We've never talked about it, but this is the first thing that changed the nature of how many cremains could go, or how many remains could go on a single grave.
Okay.
So it has the tremendous potential and it may, the potential may never come to fruition. Maybe not a lot of people do this, but it has the potential to change the number of remains that could go on a single grave.
Would we be ever allowed to make an exception?
You would be allowed to, in the future, change the rules.
I guess when I read this, I didn't understand fully about the three, so that's why I'm asking a lot of questions.
No problem.
Mm-hmm. I'm still a little bit confused here.
Sure.
So, so we still have the rule that says you would have the person could be in a vault and two cremains in the ground. Is that true?
Our current rules allow one person in a traditional vault and two cremains.
Okay.
The new rules, I'll have to find it here, that we emailed out to council in June, allows for these upright headstones, but keeps the same number of remains at any single grave at three.
So where did the seven come from?
Jamie was asking, why should we limit it to three?
Okay.
Why wouldn't we, since this picture shows a headstone of four, why wouldn't we allow four in the headstone?
Uh-huh.
Three in the ground.
And three in the ground.
So that's where I got confused.
The potential, if you did that, would be now you have four in the headstone and three in the ground.
Okay, okay.
Now, if you had a headstone of six.
Rather than what a rule is.
Right, the rule as written is.
Three total.
Three total regardless of whether they're in the ground or in the headstone.
Or in the headstone.
And that's what council, administration is most comfortable with because it keeps currently our ru, our current rule intact.
Mm-hmm. So if you had a family of six, you get a double stone. Could you have two interns and four cremains on that double lot?
With the proposal, with the proposed rule change right now, no. Not on a single lot.
No, on a, two lots.
Two lots?
I have two lots.
But I'm going to have one stone as usual. If, if.
A married couple has one stone.
If you did three and three.
Sure.
So you could do three and three?
Then you could have six total.
That's what I'm saying. You could do three and three. You could have do four and two.
Okay.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Because a married couple buys two lots and they use one stone.
Right.
Others buy two lots and use two stones. What we're saying is that on any lot, you would allow three total. Now, if you have a double lot, you know.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And so I think, for example, the case that we're considering now, or that at least has been brought to us, is a parent and a child.
Okay, so then let's go all the way back where you brought up the four. So if a married couple has four children, the married couple is, let's say they are interned and the four children are cremated, then the stone that you're going to want would be like the one that was brought up the first time.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that would be okay?
No.
No. That's going to be allowed.
Well, if you had a married couple and they have four children, so you're talking about a double lot.
Double lot.
So now you have up to six.
Double lot.
Two interns in a vault, okay, two lots, because you can't put two interns on one lot, two on their two lots that are together and normally the headstone will go in the middle of those two lots.
Yep.
We're going to allow four cremains to go into that.
Yeah, because you're still at a total of six and three and three is six.
Yeah, yeah, we're still, okay. So is that going to be, that is going to be allowed then?
Yes, a total of three per lot.
On a double lot.
So a double lot is six.
Yep.
If somebody bought three lots, it's nine.
We're all over the place, okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I completely understand when the day comes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Yes.
You're all clear?
I have, I have one question kind of related in the background brief sheet, which is the one with the first picture on it without the names on it, but the other side?
Yes.
Just underneath the photo, it says, the current cemetery rules and regulations allow for the burial of one, what we talked about. So my question is, the second sentence, the current rules also prohibit above-ground, level burial vaults and mausoleums except by permission of the city manager. So I'm trying to figure out when that would come into play and do we really want that, the city manager to have that?
Well, what these rules do is would allow this type of headstone.
Change it then?
Yes. Now, what we haven't brought forward in probably over the next ten to twenty years is what's facing a lot of other cemeteries and we may want to look at this, is people are buying up, say, four lots and putting a family mausoleum. There's one in the cemetery where I grew up, there's now one in St. Az's, I believe, when I went through there during Memorial Day. So that's something, we're always looking at new technologies and we'll be bringing changes as we think council may want to consider based on those new technologies, but it's becoming more common for people to purchase a number of lots and then they come kind of prefabbed, family-sized mausoleums. So there would be, that's just an exa, and we don't allow that currently under, without the exception of the city manager.
Right.
But that would be an example of an above-ground burial. Different than these headstones that we're now going to potentially allow.
But it's, but it's, but it's actually at the discretion of the city manager alone, right?
Not the ones we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I'd have to look, to be honest, I haven't really looked that deep into that section of the cemetery ordinance.
Okay.
Was some, I know when Don started to change, when Don brought his mausoleum, I'm sure they took it to council even though the city manager at the time may have had the right to approve it.
Okay.
Any audience comments? They fall asleep. Karen, anyone in there? Back to the table.
Just want to make sure, like I was saying, that this motion's identical to the one we just tabled, so we're approving all the ones we just talked about tabling.
No, 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 no. Only this one.
Well, it doesn't say that in the motion, that's why I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, well, you could, you could, I'll have to talk.
I didn't make it, that's why I.
Yeah, well, you can amend it if you.
You are correct. Changes as provided in the, in the background brief.
Regarding.
Regarding article.
Article two, one or whatever.
Can I just, how about I just approve the revision of the cemetery headstone guideline rules and regulations? Is that a better motion?
No, because that's in the other one.
No.
That's in the other one. This is the cremain where strictly talking cremains.
We'll delay this one until you approve all of it.
I mean. Or the second discussion draft in the packet? Oh, it got hung up.
Okay, we're off set, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Nobody, nobody there for the cemetery discussion?
Jim is still not there.
Okay.
He wanted to have cremation remains allowed in the headstones.
Right.
Read that way.
Or the, the second discussion draft, the second one.
Is it, yeah.
Yeah, for number seven. That we're talking on right now.
Is there anything?
Headstone for cremains.
In the one that's been postponed that's discussing this issue? Because actually, that should be part of cemetery rules and regulations.
Yeah, it would be under the article two.
About number one. Second page, bottom.
It is the cha, okay, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
The cha, the second draft that presented, the second motion that we worked on, the changes were not in that first discussion draft of 2022.
Right, they're just the last, he, he keeps putting, giving you a clean copy, but the very last two pieces of paper on item seven, the attachment, are the changes that only relate to the headstones.
Yes.
If that was your question.
So if item seven, which is the cremains.
Yep.
Passes.
Correct.
It will become part of the new cemetery rules if we pass these.
He would have to revise item six for next time because with the changes that you just made, if you approve this motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So when it comes back for the.
Yeah, he'll include these changes, if you do move forward with item seven.
Mm-hmm.
It just changes the, the rules that related to this issue. Would we come back for next time for the overall, he'll need to make some adjustments to that.
Yeah, okay. Okay. But we do have a motion unless there's amendment at this point. Be not. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. It's a good point, but it, the motion really should have.
Yes, I'll.
Explain that it was for cremains only because it looked like we passed.
You're correct. Yep. I'll talk with our department directors. There are several motions, this packet got messed up and I'll take responsibility for that.
Kido. We're moving on now to item eight, consideration of extension of the emergency declaration. Mr. City Manager?
Before you tonight is an extension of the emergency declaration. Back in, in March, we declared the declaration and extended it by ninety days. Then I believe in June, we extended it for thirty. I'm coming back and asking that it be extended from July seventh through September seventh. There is again a change in this motion. It should be on the second line, was declared by Mayor Timmericks on March fifteenth. I keep having that go through. Again, the county has care funds that are eligible for expenses made by the city through October thirtieth, so there are some funds that we're still expending right now that we would like to make sure that we're eligible for the care funds, which is the main reason to extend the declaration.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve extending the local state of emergency that was declared by Mayor Timmericks on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty, from July seventh, two thousand twenty to September seventh, two thousand twenty.
March fifteenth.
March.
Oh, I apologize, March fifteenth.
Most may made and support. Is there any reason why you're only going to September and not to the end of the year?
I think by then, we'll probably have maxed out. I, I mean, no, no good reason.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion?
I have another question with this because it was my understanding that the county executive did not extend the counties.
Correct, I believe they have all the money they're getting from the federal government.
Okay, so that is.
So that even though we need to apply to the county to get our money, they already have all of their funds given to them. Is, is my guess on that, but I'm just guessing why he did not extend is because they've already gotten what they're going to get.
Okay, thank you.
So now we in turn have to ask them for the money, but it still needs to be.
Keeping in the state of an emergency.
Yep.
And as long as we have this declaration, any costs that we have associated with COVID-19, we should be reimbursed for.
Correct, yes.
So that is dependent on the governor, as long as governor okays the declarations through a certain time?
I believe for us with, the county already has their money from the federal government. They have made a certain amount of that eligible for the local governments, so as long as the, even though we're going through the county, ultimately, they're going to turn all their paperwork into FEMA. FEMA is going to look to see, did we declare a local state of emergency? So I don't think, in this particular case, I don't think it's necessarily contingent upon whether she continues her declaration.
Okay, okay.
It's kind of a funny way because the county already got their money upfront for this portion of what we're getting, but we're still having to jump through the hoops to get it.
So the government had X amount of dollars they're going to disperse to everybody and each county got X amount of dollars.
Yes.
Wasn't based on an expense that was incurred by the county because evidently, we still have expenses that we could be charging against.
The, and I don't want to speak too far beyond what I don't know, but I believe most of what the county got for this particular pot of money, and I think they got more than just this one, but this one came, I think, based on population.
Okay.
They then turned around and divvied it out to the communities based on two factors, population and number of positive tests as of March twenty-seventh. So that's the two factors that went in to get the city, our allotment through the county was our baseline population as of the last census or the last SEMCOG estimate and then also the number of positive tests that the health department had for us as of March twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, there was also a pot of money that went to the state for local communities. The money that we're going to go after here at the county will provide us a hundred percent reimbursement on our expenses. The money that the state had that I originally thought we were going to go after would only cover seventy-five percent of our expenses and actually was going to be a lot less than the county had for us. Now, for some larger communities, that may not be the case, but you can't go for both. You had to pick or choose either go for this county money through the CARES Act or go directly to the state. If you go to the county, we're getting a hundred percent of our funds back. If we went for the state, we're only going to get seventy-five percent back. So.
Good, okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of webinars and rules.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Any audience participation?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Move on to the final item, consideration of board appointments. We have library board, planning commission and tax increment finance authority. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider making appointments to the library board, planning commission and tax increment finance authority. The city clerk has submitted you with the board applications from Sue Keel, Denise Robson, Alana Stump, Richard Weinert and Tom Garrant.
Thank you.
And we also submitted letters to the council that Dean Roberts is declining reappointment to, and that should be EDC, and Tom Havel declining reappointment to Tifa.
Thank you. We'd like to note that the council and the community appreciates both Dean Roberts and Tom Havel's service to the community for many years in those positions. Given that, we have library board appointments, I believe, first? Yes. Is there a motion for the library board for a two-year term?
I make a motion to appoint Sue Keel to the library board for a two-year term at the expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Court? It's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Twenty twenty-two. I misspoke. Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, most have been made and supported. Any discussion? Is there anybody in the audience for these appointments?
No.
Okay, it won't bother you anymore for a while, Karen. Okay, so, most have been made and supported, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We thank Sue for signing back up again. We also have another library board, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Denise Robson to the, the library board for a two-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2022.
Support.
It's been made and supported, any discussion on this reappointment? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion does pass. Again, we thank her for signing back up. Again, we have one more library term that is up, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Alana Stump to the library board for a two-year term with an expiration date, date of June 30, 2022.
Support.
Most have been made and supported, any discussion on this one? Glad to see all three of them are coming back for these board appointments. Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion does pass. I would ask that you would confirm the reappointment of Richard Weinert to the planning commission, is there a motion?
I make motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Richard Weinert to the planning commission for a three-year term with the expiration date ending June 30, 2023.
Support.
Most have been made and supported, any discussion? Working with Rich on the planning commission, I'm sure City Manager will agree, a very nice job, is a good addition to the commission. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. And also, I would ask that you would confirm my reappointment of Tom Garrett to the Tifa board, is there a motion?
I make a mo, oh, I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Tom Garrett to the tax increment finance authority for a four-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2024.
Support.
Most have been made and supported, any discussion? Again, we thank Tom for his reappointment, and Rich. Any other discussion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to, and I'd like to note that there are two openings on the EDC, and also on the tax increment finance authority, with those two retirements from, those two boards, and we had one opening on the EDC already. We move on, miscellaneous matters from the City Manager, sir.
Our asphalt patching contractor should be in town this week doing asphalt repairs throughout, mainly repairing where we've done catch basin rebuilds or water and sewer repairs over the last year. Also, the contractor is tentatively scheduled to complete the structure readjustment on Madison and pave that this week, with the milling and paving of Pierce shortly to follow.
Thank you. Move on to council comments, Jamie?
None.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
Nothing, no.
Dennis?
No.
Rob?
All set.
Mike?
Nothing else, thank you.
The only thing I have is, and City Manager sent us a note, and I've noted a few people while I was gone, I've got a few texts, on fireworks, and we need to take a look. It wasn't that many years ago that we had looked at the ordinance on fireworks, especially since the state had changed the rules. And I can't remember what we did, but, and I haven't, I've been gone all this time, but it looked as though we went with the state rules and no further.
The states had two major changes recently. The first major change was that they changed it so that the fireworks were allowed the day before, the day of, and the day after any federal holiday. At that time, we looked at our ordinance and kind of, ours was so old that it didn't really match up at all, and we kind of, at that time, kind of wanted to see the fallout before we made a change and see what others did with their ordinances. We probably were late and, or remiss in not addressing it back then. Since that time, a new state law came out that took those day before, day of, and day after all of the federal holidays, and shrunk those down to, I think it's, maybe Memorial Day, New Year's Eve, and then June 29 through July 4, that kind of, they, they took away some of the other holidays that you wouldn't traditionally have fireworks, and gave a little bit more time to 4th of July. It's the 29 through the 4th, and then also including the 5th, if the 5th falls on like a certain days of the week. And so they still, you still, at a local level, cannot infringe on anyone's right under that state law for those holidays, but the local government does have the right to set any limits they want on any of the other days.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something, yeah, now that the end result of fireworks being legal in Michigan is people set them off more often, communities are starting to hear that backlash from residents that they don't like them going off all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And in particular, certain times of night.
Well, the state says that you can do them these days, but they're not saying you can't do them the other days? There's no.
Correct, there's, there.
No regulations?
There's no regulations at a state level to say that you can't do them the other days.
Uh huh.
But the state law allows the local government to decide at the, for their own selves, whether you want people to be able to apply, set off a firework on June 15.
Yeah, okay.
For example.
All right, so it's very clear, if we wanna do anything to subside the shootings all through the year, we have to have a local ordinance to curtail that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, I got you. I thought when the state said, these are the days that you can shoot them, then all the other days would be illegal, and we weren't enforcing that rule. Okay, and we were gonna talk about that at a future workshop?
Certainly, any, we could do it on the 20th if, if council would like.
Would you have time to get anything together that quick?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have sample ordinances and, yep, yeah, I could certainly have it done by then.
Would council want that as a topic of conversation?
You okay? Sure.
Yeah?
Yep.
If you would, yeah, put that on.
Sure.
Okay, and that's right after our July 20 meeting is the workshop.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and that's all I have, I hope everybody had a nice fourth, and hopefully we can get through the rest of the summer now safely, and hopefully we get better news on the COVID and everything else here during the summer, but hopefully we can make the best of what we have, and hope and pray that things get better for everybody in the, the near future. Okay, we move on to close session this evening, we need a motion to go into closed for the purpose of negotiations on, yeah, on collective bargaining agreement, is there a motion?
I make a motion to convene to close session in accordance with Section 8(c) of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement as requested by administration.
Support.
Most have been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be you not, roll call.
Green?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Kravich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.